Please stand to salute the flag.
I am the regent of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the rule.
Counselor Zabit.
Present.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Ray Coopero.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselar Valaneda.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
All members present.
Next item on the agenda, memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson in regards to Tito's Bakery's owners, Vicente and Isabella Avellaneda. Whereas Vicente Tito Avellaneda first came to Chelsea in 1976 as a co-founder of G and T Bakery and Pizza Shop with Giovanni John Falzone at 142 Broadway in Chelsea Square. And whereas Vicente and Isabella Avellaneda moved to Chelsea along with their sons Roy and Chris when they became homeowners in 1977. And whereas Vicente Avellaneda later bowed out his partner and changed the name to Tito's Bakery in the end of 1977 and was joined by his wife Isabella Avellaneda while Giovanni moved on to open up John's Pizza on Central Ave. And whereas on September 26, 1980, Tito's Bakery relocated and opened at 333 Broadway. And whereas through the years as the downtown Chelsea business owners, both Vicente Avellaneda and Isabel became civically active members of the city where they lived, worked, and raised their family, which now included their third son Nicholas. And whereas that involvement included being a member of the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce, the Chelsea Charter Committee, the Cultural Council, Xonta Club, and sponsor of various local events, including Latin American Cultural Festival, Chelsea Indoor and Outdoor Soccer Leagues, the Chelsea Downtown Christmas Parade, and hundreds of youth and civic ad and book sponsorships. And whereas through its 44-year existence, Tito's Bakery has employed dozens of local Chelsea residents and has been a positive economic contributor to the downtown Chelsea area and Chelsea in general. And whereas on August 8, 2020, Tito's Bakery was permanently closed as Vicente and Isabella Avellaneda decided to begin their retirement lives after 50 years of self-employed business owners, therefore let it be resolved that the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of its residents, business leaders, and stakeholders, wish both Vicente and Isabel Avellaneda a well-deserved, joyful, and healthy retirement life and gratitude for their contributions to the city of Chelsea. What is the wish of the council?
All right, Adapto Avellaneda, if there's any under suspension, there are no objections.
Counselor Leo Robinson asked that this resolution be adopted unanimously under suspension. Are there any objections? Seeing none, Counselor Robinson, you have the floor.
All right, just a couple of quick words. My family and Tito and Isabel, we intertwined over all the years that they've been here. Actually, I had the opportunity to coach Roy in youth basketball. Chris, we used to take Camden with us. And Nick is pretty in contact with my daughter from time to time. I just want to say it's a wonderful family and 45 years of service at Chelsea. You deserve this and thank you for your service.
Anyone else would like to be recognized? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to congratulate the Avellaneda's here for the 45 years of service and commitment to the city of Chelsea and feeding so many of us with your beautiful cakes. I remember when I first started buying the cakes in there around 1988, '89. I had little children, they're 30-years-old plus today. But I remember you and your workers and your boys and in the picture that I saw in the paper a few weeks ago, you had the same family. So it's great to see that a family has started a business 45 years ago but also still together today, so I commend you on that. I also commend Tito for his engagement. Roy, you read all pretty much of his history of doing things in Chelsea. But when I first came here and got involved in the Democratic Party, Tito was the going out tier member of the Democratic Ward Two Committee. So I seen him in there with the Gonzalez family that used to live on Hertry. So it's my honor to pay this respect to you for your long years working in the bakery, making cakes, serving coffee, making the bread. My friend, actually my best friend, he was my best man for our wedding. And when we used to stay together down on Tremont on Douglas Park, it was this little variety store. And every morning, Tito Bakery truck would come up. I'm like, geez, I think this guy's in Chelsea. And he would just be in Boston. And I just thought it was great. And I know we, you know, we had some ups and downs with our political runs, but through it all, we've all, we shake hands, we're here today, we live in the same neighborhood. It's an honor, truly an honor for someone that's been in the bakery business and in the business for 45 years and with the same family, his three boys are here, your boys have done a wonderful job. And your wife, she's always there with her, you know, bakery stuff on and other people around her, always looking good there. So congratulations on your retirement. Congratulations on your success of the bakery. And, you know, I wish you Godspeed and God health as you continue to live a prominent life. Thank you.
Counselor Coopero.
I don't know you a whole bunch. I know your kids for a long time. And people should be proud of you and your wife because this is what immigrants can do. You are an immigrant from another country and you made it in this nation to show that immigrants can succeed, and you're a perfect example. I commend you. Thank you.
Counselor Garcia.
Mr. President, I personally want to really recognize also, thank you, Leo Robinson, for presenting this specific resolution to the family, to the Avellaneda family. I thank you for opening your business and opening your doors to a lot of immigrants out there as well that have made your business a safe haven and find it to be a safe haven where they can go have their cafecito with their pan. And, you know, you are definitely a staple in our community. When we go out of Chelsea, there's always someone who knows Tito's Bakery. And you guys have been very symbolic in our city. You have been a safe haven for a lot of immigrants who do not feel comfortable going to other shops but find a little piece of home at your bakery shop. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for being in business for so long. And I wish you the best and I know that you will continue to be exemplary citizens of the city of Chelsea. So thank you for all you've done.
Anyone else? Counselor Vega.
I would like to say thank you. I've known you guys literally my whole life. And it's an honor and privilege to just know you on a personal level and all the efforts that you guys do for the community and have done for Chelsea and our family. For, I would say personally, both of my pregnancies, I had huge cravings of cafecitos and they me dieron todo mi hantojo. So, you know, I would share that little cute story, but it's true. And now my boys also enjoyed going there and having their cultural food, pupusas, and coffee when my husband's not looking and things. And we're just truly going to miss you guys. And so thank you for everything and you guys should be proud, not only for your business, but these amazing men that you've raised and that also are a huge, have created huge things for our city. And so, thank you.
If there's no objection, does anyone mind if I say something from the chair?
Can I actually, can you guys hear me or no?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say something. Do you mind?
No, go right ahead, Counsel.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that Tito's has been a staple in the community for so long. I remember the Laca festivals and all of these beautiful community events that I grew up in that at the time I didn't realize who was running them until, you know, I started to get into politics. I can think of countless families, including my own, whose morning routine and Saturday morning family routine started with a pan largo from French bread from Tito's Bakery. I literally used to have family members come all the way from New York and they would like stack up, they would stock up on a bunch of French breads and take them back with them because they loved it so much. So I just wanted to thank you for what, for being a staple in the community, for starting so many traditions, and for your dedication to the community. Thank you.
So if there's no objection, I'd like to just say a few words from the chair, seeing none. And I'll try to keep it, not choke up at all. But first, let me just thank Counselor Leo Robinson for bringing this up. Obviously, it's difficult, I'm sure, for any family member to try to recognize one of our own in this sort of manner, so I appreciate you doing that service. A lot has been said about the history, the years, and such. But in the last 10 and in the few months after the closing, the one thing that has struck me, being close obviously, is the number of other business owners that have come up to me and said, what an inspiration that these two people were. And I know that as politicians, as bureaucrats, we try to create opportunities for businesses. We try to encourage growth in our community, we try to start up businesses, we figure out ways when we can create job growth and such. But I think that the work done by these two individuals does something that we can never do. So many contractors, business owners and such, were inspired by these two saying, if he can do it, if they can do it, if we follow the same model, work hard, we can succeed in this country too. And that is something that we have to recognize, that when we go out as politicians, as bureaucrats, say what can we do to grow businesses, it is to look at businesses like this and support them in ways that we can. Because nothing does better than trying to support the ones that have been there for a while to keep them going. And it's such, it is really a special club. I've had Lebanese pizza shop owners, contractors of all the races and nationalities, women who own their own shops also, all speak lovingly and respectfully of them because they know how hard it is to do what they have done. And it just creates the will to say, I'm going to try. And that means a lot. And I don't think that these two know the impression that they've made across the board. And for that, I want to just say, I'm trying here. For that, you've been a great model, heroes. And I know me and my brothers, we do the best to emulate everything you've done. So, thank you again. And on behalf of the community and all the businesses who have seen your work, we thank you. Because it really is a special class, a special type of character that makes people do what you do. And it isn't easy, but you've done it and you've inspired so many others to do that in this city. And for that, we thank you. Thank you. That's it. I'd just like to say that we have a couple of resolutions also. In addition to the resolution offered by Counselor Leo Robinson, we have two resolutions by State Senator Saudi Domenico and also by State Representative Dan Ryan. We'd please ask you to come join us here in front so we can take a couple of pictures. And we'll recess for just a few minutes. Thank you. We'll now move on to the next item on our agenda. We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Vega Maldonado in regards to honoring Latinx Trailblazers. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15, the Chelsea City Council would like to recognize the following Latinx Trailblazers for the continuous amazing work in the Chelsea community. And whereas Sonia Searson for providing a service and being a business in the city of Chelsea. Whereas Eduardo Chacon to be recognized for his work with Jupax Event Company, events such as Chelsea Nights Market, Pupusa Fiesta, Fiesta Verano, and Chelsea Disco Party. And whereas Lourdes Alvarez for her response efforts during COVID-19, where she was instrumental in many areas including our culturally sensitive communications efforts, a frontline hero at the Food Pump Tree, key coordinator for rental assistance program, as well as the Chelsea Eats Card Program. She is to be admired for her work ethic and relentless hours spent helping residents of Chelsea. Whereas Superintendent Almiel Beta and school chairwoman Kelly Garcia for their efforts in ensuring that our students have the resources they need to get a high school quality education during COVID-19, providing food, clothing, technology, and school supplies, et cetera. And whereas the Chelsea Collaborative to be recognized for their work and efforts in addressing the food insecurity that sprung from the current COVID-19 pandemic during Chelsea. And now therefore be it that the Chelsea City Council honor these Trailblazers for being part of the community, whether they are maybe providing a service, being a community activist, being frontline heroes, et cetera. These individuals, organizations, and businesses have become an example of how Hispanic Latinx have positively influenced and enriched our community, state, and nation. Counselor Vega Maldonado and all members of the Chelsea City Council, what is the wish of the council? Counsel Maldonado has to be adopted under suspension. If there's any objection, seeing none, Counsel Vega Maldonado, you have the floor.
Hola y bienvenidos. Hoy estamos celebrando ustedes. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí. Today is the kickoff celebration in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, in which we are celebrating some very special community members and leaders by awarding them with the Latinx Trailblazer Award for their outstanding leadership and efforts for the betterment of our city. Thank you very much for being here.
Counsel Calvin Brown.
Hey, just want to say, I want to thank my colleague for bringing this, a resolution on National Hispanic Heritage Month. It's so fitting that we recognize the Avellaneda family today on their 45-year history here. This is what this is all about, the culture, the celebration. It talks about the food, it talks about the family. The, one of our council members talked about the parades and the festivities. This is exactly what this Heritage Month is all about, that we go back, we recognize all those that have made contribution to folks. One of the council members also talked about people that immigrated from another country to come here. And after we looked at Vicente and his wife here, we look at what we get from the offspring. We see these three young men here that's working in our city, two of them, but we know you back and forth. But we give thanks tonight, not only to those that we recognize nationally, but we recognize as we recognize the family here, we recognize the local ones. This is the first that we, first time that we took out and recognized a local one that's making a big difference in our community. And we all know what work, what tireless work that the collaborative do. This weekend, I'm trying to get past, on Blossom Street, I'm trying to get past this woman that's blocking the street, and another woman jumps out, she grabs this big box and she takes a box of food to an elderly folk. And I drive up and who is it? Gladys Vega. So, so that's the dedication, the dedication of those that's put their lives on the front line to help out folks with the COVID-19 response. We had a great response thing. And, you know, we have a dynamite crew of people here that, yes, it's great to recognize them nationally and do it nationally, but I'm so honored and thankful that you said, let's do something locally. And there's many folks that we can do, but this is the annual, so I just look forward to every year doing this on top of the Hispanic Cultural Heritage Month, which starts from September 15 to October 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Robinson.
Thank you, Counsel President. I know Eduardo Chacon, who actually was very involved in Night Market here and he's worked on a bunch of Chelsea projects. His latest project is interviewing the history of the city of Chelsea that at some point they'll be bringing that forth to show the community, the past history of the city and bring coming history up to date. So I want to recognize Eduardo's work.
Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I also want to thank my colleague, Counselor Melinda Vega, for introducing this particular resolution, really acknowledging and celebrating our Latinos, our Latino community. And this is a kickoff of a part two. So this is actually a kickoff, recognizing some of our leaders because there are so many other Latinos that we want to recognize that we know have been vital, but given the COVID-19 restrictions, we weren't able to recognize everyone in this one meeting because of the space. But there is a part two coming up in our next meeting. And tonight, aside from recognizing some of the Latinos that are here, I want to take a moment to recognize someone who may often be overlooked, who hides in her cubicle. I know that she's always in Tom Ambrosino's office, but also, and I should say, I find you here sometimes at ridiculous hours, like it's 8:00 PM and Lourdes is here figuring something out. And Lourdes, I know you joined us fairly recently. I know you live here in Chelsea, you've made Chelsea your home, but more than making it your home, you were vital during this pandemic as well. You have always been right there on the front lines for our food distribution led by the city, making sure that you're speaking to people, that you're helping them, either letting them know about signing up for the census or helping them with the rental assistance. I've seen you out there in the sun, helping people complete that application, answer any questions. So you have been instrumental. I thank you and I know that I'm speaking also on behalf of some of my colleagues here. Thank you so much for your countless hours, for your relentless effort, for that incredible work ethic and that passion that you have to serve our Latino community in our native language, in Spanish. And it's clear and it's important to say that communication was key to stop the spread. And you were the person behind the keyboard, making sure that we spread that message in Spanish. So thank you. Muchas gracias por todo lo que has hecho por nuestra comunidad y eres un orgullo latino. Thank you.
If I may speak from the chair? Any objections? None? I get to talk about the Chelsea Collaborative. And what can we say? You know, I'll say this, everyone knows the work that the collaborative's done over the last years. They have been instrumental in giving a voice to those who need it. We know them to be champions for those who, for tenants, we know them to be champions for those who were cheated out of fair wages or just out of their savings. We know them to work on immigration rights. We know them to work on a number of different issues across the board. They really are the voice for the little guy, or woman, or child in that matter. A lot of people in this community know that if they're in trouble, they go to 318 and they ask for Gladys Broadway. Just when you think you know an organization, just when you think you understand their work, they took it to another level this year. This community, the nation, we faced something that we'd never seen before. We got hit hard in ways that we never expected. And so you have, right away from the start of this pandemic, when people were already losing their work, their jobs, and hungry, Gladys Vega stepped up to the plate and began to use her network and said, let me just start for a few boxes. I need to begin to work and feed as many families as I can. And we all saw what this turned into. 100 boxes turned into 500 boxes. 500 boxes turned into 800. 800 boxes went into 15, and so on, and so on. And despite how many boxes this group was able to put together and the resources that she called upon, the line got longer and longer. I had front row seat to seeing the desperation of her and the volunteers when they weren't able to able to feed people. It was real, the tears were real, the frustration was real, pain was real. But they have managed and they have done something that wasn't up their sleeve, and they, they came out when this community needed them the most. We all know Gladys, we've seen her work endless hours, and it is that level of commitment and work in this community that inspires everybody that works with her. She has with her Tanayi Vega, she has Deceña, she has Sylvia Tanayi, and everyone else who joins. I can tell you that if the leader of a group doesn't show commitment and dedication, the rest don't follow. And there is a number of people there who are given so much to make sure what they can do helps people. And it's through that leadership, whether you're, if the quarterback shows any fear, then the rest of the team can't move the ball down the field. Their confidence and level of dedication and the spirit that they see in their leader causes the rest of that group to be unbelievable. They are ferocious. And let me just say that as a guy who walks into that group, you better be on your toes because that group of women is ferocious. Seriously, if you are a man walking into there, you better be able to lift your weight and more because they will show you what it takes to get the job done, and it's inspirational. This city is really lucky to have them as a whole, and I wish them the best of luck as they continue their efforts to serve this community. And you know, I love you guys because you're awesome. Thank you.
At this, at this time, I'll take a, we're going to ask for a five minute break so we can present the groups with their different citations.
Can you say one member from each?
I'm sorry, one member for each, yes.
My, you know, my nominee, my representative.
That's fine. Yes, so what we'll do first is if Councilor Vega will just come up here with her nominees and take a picture with them and present them their citations, and then we'll take turns. Yes, Councilor Vega, I'm sorry.
Speak about.
Councilor Vega, Councilor Vega would like to say a few words about the collaborative. I will, let me.
And.
Oh, nominee.
And my nominees as well. So, you know, I've, I've known Gladys Vega from the womb, I would say. So I think from anyone in this room, I know her quite well. She truly is an inspiration and it's an honor to just watch you. This, my, I, I'm in a loss for words because you are, I truly admire you, and it's a privilege to be your daughter. And, and I always say, if I can be like half the woman my mommy is, like, I, I am successful or, and I feel like I've accomplished a lot. You know, through COVID, for the folks that don't know this, when, when everything started, this started literally in our front yard. And I too have seen the relentless work of everyone there and the tears when we haven't been able to feed folks. And, and that is very sad, you know, to go through that experience. But, you know, my mom, Gladys Vega, and the collaborative women do thrive off urgency. And it's amazing, the relationships that they've been able to build in the community so that their work can be sustainable. Aside from my beautiful mother, I would highlight Tenere Garcia. Who is the coordinator of the food pantry now, but just to share a little bit of her story, you know, this woman has gone through natural disasters twice, which is why she's here today. She, I don't know, she practiced, you know, this at a, at a smaller scale, living through Maria in Puerto Rico. And I, I know the efforts that she did out there, and to see her as a single mom, working relentless hours and, you know, to ensure that our community members are being fed and pouring her heart and soul in this work is just amazing. So, thank you. And, yeah. My thing. Oh, sorry, me caught that one. So, I nominated Almi, our superintendent, and Kelly Garcia, the chairwoman of the school committee. I have seen personally, behind the scenes, the hours that they put in to ensure that our young kids and youth have access to internet. Like, I remember conversations where Kelly was, it was probably like 10, and she's texting Almi, and I'm like, wow, this is insane. And so, you know, I'm, we're just privileged to have a Latina superintendent, right? And she, these women are like a dynamic duo that, that really resemble and, and what we need in, in Chelsea for our kids and children. So thank you very much for all your hard work and efforts throughout this. And I know, Almi, that there's been times where you've gotten extremely scared and nervous, but you rock, girl. Thank you.
So I'll first ask Councilor Vega Maldonado to step forward and present Almi and Kelly Garcia, our chairwoman for the school committee, so they can make the presentation and take some pictures. So we'll try to space everything out so that we're abiding by COVID-19 rules here. I'll, I'll stand in the back, I'll stand in the back, yeah. Councilor Garcia and Lourdes, please come to the board. We'll return to our public speaking portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to address the city council, please step up to the microphone, state your name and your address. To the microphone over there. Just turn the microphone around, thank you, and just state your name and address.
My name is James, 150 Hurst Street. I'm here to, in support of the marijuana zoning change by Council, Councilor Vida. I'm here to support that, you know, I believe that that's going to vitalize the Chelsea downtown area, and I really want to see that it can go out of the industrial zone and get into the downtown area so that Chelsea downtown is ready for the future as, you know, the marijuana industry continues to get bigger and bigger. And that's all. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Alex.
Alex Floyd Vargas, over at 260 Clark Ave, apartment 807 in Chelsea, hopefully you guys can hear me. Yeah, I would like to talk very quickly about how busy the fall is going to be with the census, and we need that for our goods and services, especially our services, so hopefully that's done soon. Unfortunately, I don't know what the end date is because I hear different things in the media. Also with the voting, after all, it's our civic duty, just like you have to do for jury duty. It's not the most enjoyable thing in the world, but you have to do it. What else? The flu shot. I get mine because I don't want to be sick for three weeks. So hopefully people can talk to their doctors about what they need, and I'm a believer in proven vaccines, so I get mine when I can. And, yeah, you know, I wear a mask. Hopefully this pandemic will be over soon. I don't know when, I'm not going to say when, but, you know, if there's a proven vaccine for that, I'll take that as well. And in the meantime, I spray, I clean, wear my mask, and just be as careful as I can be. Thanks.
Seeing no other speakers, we'll now move on to the next portion. We have a approval of the minutes from the last regularly scheduled meeting. Is there a motion? Chair recognizes Councilor Garcia.
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, that motion is approved. We have a communication received from City Manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to promotion of mask use. Dear councilors, I am writing a response to the city council order requesting that I promote the use of mask wearing in the city. I assure you that this effort to promote mask wearing has been ongoing for my office since the start of the pandemic. We have regularly provided messaging on safe practices, including mask wearing on social media, our website, and calls to constituents. Further, I have regularly appeared on local cable during the pandemic, and this is always a topic of discussion. Although enforcement of mask guidance against pedestrians in outside areas is a bit problematic, both legally and logistically, it can be, as it has been, effectively enforced in interior business spaces. Most recently, we have been working with the state COVID-19 task force to enhance enforcement of this and other COVID-19 regulations through unannounced inspections of liquor establishments, barber shops, hair salon, and retail stores. I expect these efforts to continue as long as the coronavirus remains prevalent in the city of Chelsea. What is the wish of the council? Seeing none. We have a communication for the city manager, mayor, I'm sorry, City Manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to appointments to boards and commissions. Dear councilors pursuant to section 4.2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the historical commission, Matthew Frank, 45 Jones Ave, for a three-year term expiring in 2023. For appointment to the planning board, Mr. Khalid Shadique, 8 Grove Street, number 8, Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Mrs. Sharon Caulfield, who has been appointed to the Chelsea Housing Authority. This unexpired term will commence November 9th, 2020, and it will expire in February 25, 2022. For appointment to the Board of Health, Mr. Ola Bayoda, 9 Eden Street, Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Catherine Mass, who has resigned. This term expires on February 28th, 2021. For appointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Mr. Christopher Moroccan, 12 Maverick Street, apartment number 1, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2023. For reappointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Ms. Colleen Kelly, 11 Spiny Path Lynn, Massachusetts, for another two-year term expiring June 30th, 2022. I recognize the reluctance of the city council to appoint non-residents to our boards, but the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is unique in requiring that at least one member of the board have housing development expertise. See administrative code part 2, section 18 dash 01A. Ms. Kelly's appointment has met the requirement for the past four years. Mrs. Kelly has over 30 years' experience with working at mass housing. The Director of Housing and Community Development strongly supports her reappointment. For the above reasons, I request your approval to these appointments. What is the wish of the board?
I make a motion to move to second reading.
Councilor Garcia asks, does this move to a second reading? We have a communication received from City Clerk Jeanette Citron White regarding warrant for the state election November 3rd, 2020. We'll have something under new business. What is the wish of the council on this communication?
We make a motion to accept and file unanimously under suspension, and there's something else coming up under new business.
Okay. We have no committee reports.
No.
Hold on, under unfinished. We move on to new business.
New business?
Yep.
First off-
First order under new business introduced by Councilor Vido, request for a Subcommittee on Conference to discuss the zoning for recreational marijuana.
Councilor Vido.
I'd like to adopt this unanimously under suspension if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it briefly, please.
Seeing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. President. So basically, when the marijuana, recreational marijuana question came before us, it passed in Chelsea 55% to 45%. And so when the City Council a couple of years ago inherited this, we weren't really sure how to zone it. We weren't sure how the 45% would respond to the 55, or if we were ready to have maybe dispensaries in Broadway. But there's a lot of other things that have come along with this recreational marijuana, such as social consumption and delivery, where the zoning can be quite restrictive. And so I just think it's important for us to just reflect and go back and have a conversation and try to see what we can do to try to make sure that the zoning that we're providing in the city is equitable. We're making great strides here in creating a diversity and inclusion office and making sure that we're trying to essentially right the wrongs of the past. We know that communities like Chelsea have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, hence why the city was giving away these economic empowerment certificates to folks that met three of the six criteria, whether you came from a community that was majority folks of color, that people were, if you've been affected, if you've been arrested, there was a bunch of different criteria. But we're seeing, the reason why I think it's important for us to talk about this, we're seeing folks from Chelsea having to open up these recreational marijuana shops outside of the city because our zoning is so stringent. Even Gladys Vega, who is someone who, in Somerville, is making huge stride in opening up her own recreational marijuana place, I would have appreciated if we had the zoning here for her to have been able to stay local and for us to invest those dollars here. So I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support local folks who have been disproportionately impacted. Because time and time again, what we're seeing here is just people with the capital and the big bucks behind them coming and building and capitalizing on a law that, quite frankly, just got a lot of us in trouble 20 years ago. And so I just want to make sure that we're going into this in good faith and making sure that we're not just supporting diversity and inclusion offices, but that we're also, like, really looking at any way that we can right the wrongs of the past. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none.
Next order introduced by Councilor Robinson, request for the City Manager to give an update on the Navigator's program.
The City Manager actually under suspension if there's no objection.
Seeing none. No discussion. Next order.
Next order introduced by Councilor Robinson and Councilor Avellaneda, request for the City Manager to look into hiring a consultant for the Hiring Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Anyone else wish to speak on that? I see Councilor Damali Vito, you have the chair.
I do. Thank you, Councilor Garcia. I actually would ask that we move this to a Subcommittee on Conference to have a conversation on it. I'm not the biggest fan of paying folks thousands and thousands of dollars to just basically tell us what to do. I think that we have enough sense and know how to be able to have some of these conversations, but I'll entertain the conversation. But I would like for us to have a deeper dialogue about it.
So, Councilor Robinson asked for a roll call vote. Can you clarify clerk, a yes vote would be?
Yes. A yes vote would send it to the Subcommittee on Conference, and no vote would be no, and you just adopt it under suspension.
Everyone clear? I see Councilor Avellaneda, you have a question?
No, on the motion, I'd just like to speak.
You would like to speak on it? You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I will be voting no to not send this to Subcommittee. I think that I expressed my thoughts and feelings on this when we had passed the original motion to fund this position, that given the competition for seeking qualified candidates for this, that, and that we were late in the game, that the hiring of a search firm, search firm, rather, made the most common sense in that the City Manager is well within his realm to be able to locate one or two firms locally, and we're talking about an estimate of $15,000. And I think it's well worth the money to hire someone who can look nationally at this issue. My belief is that the superintendent found, using a search firm, found a qualified company, of qualified individual, rather, out of North Carolina. So you can understand how important it is that we find someone just as qualified, and that this would entail a network that is far beyond just putting an ad in the local municipal, you know, magazine that the City Manager has had. We've already shown a difficulty in hiring the assessor's office. It's been vacant for nearly a year. So I would like to make sure that we work on this quickly, and so that I don't think that, I'll be voting against this because I'd rather move on this faster than later, and there's, so I'm already decided, so I'm voting no against going to conference.
Thank you. I see Councilor Ennio Lopez, you have the floor.
Through the chair, if I may ask a question to the City Manager.
Absolutely.
Thank you. City Manager, how much do we be paying for a consultant?
Tom Ambrosino, if you can please answer that question. How much do we pay for a consultant?
So these kinds of search firms typically charge in the vicinity of $15,000 to $20,000 to conduct a comprehensive search. So it's not just, they, there's a couple components to what they would typically do. They not only scour and get good resumes brought in, they do the initial vetting of candidates. They help you sometimes set up an interview committee of city officials and sometimes members of the community to conduct interviews of finalists and then make recommendations to the appointing authority. So it's, there's work that they do, a fair amount of work, but the cost is about between $15,000 and $20,000 typically.
All right, thank you.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you, Councilor, thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Councilor Lopez. Anyone else? Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chairwoman. I would not mind having a conference on this. I think it's important that we consider a conference. One is that we can actually talk about what we're trying to do and what we're trying to get out of this consultant when we hire, if we decide to hire him, and what we're looking to get. I mean, we're going into this here, this is a big position, this is a new, fairly new position, and I do think that we, you know, have sense enough to understand what we'd like to have here, but I think we need to have some type of conversation that when we do define the office, the framework of the office, at least we'll have some early conversation on it. Whether it goes, you know, to, from the committee back to the floor for overall vote, we'll still have some conversation. I think $15,000, $20,000 is a lot of money to sit down and just really say, okay, we want you to come in, and we want you to tell us how to go out, look for candidates, and bring them back, and then vet out the applications. That's something we've done in the past. We've done things like that, and it costs us a lot more. And we end up getting candidates right in our own backyard, whether they've been from Revere, whether they've been in-house candidates. But we shouldn't continue to just have this notion that we always have to throw something off because we want other people to make a decision for us. So I don't see anything wrong with having a conversation. I think it would benefit us as a city council body to have a conversation, one way or another. I think we'll lean with a better understanding. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Great, we move on to roll call.
Roll call. Councilor Zabid.
Yes.
Yes to send it to conference? Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor Recupero?
Was that to send to the Subcommittee? Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Sorry, yes, yes, yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Avellaneda?
No.
And Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, send it to the conference. Three opposed, the motion is adopted.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have an order introduced by Councilor Avellaneda in regards for the City Manager to have the city interim provide the City Council with the list of proposed assessed values for 2021 tax rate approval. What is the wish of the council? Councilor Avellaneda moves to adopt under suspension if there are no objections, and you have the floor.
Thank you. As we enter into the fall, it comes to that time of the year when we will be looking at setting the new tax rate for 2021. In anticipation of that, typically around this time of the year, the assessor has already compiled a preliminary assessed of new values, adjusted values for properties. This list was provided to us last year, made publicly, I'm sorry, and made public. I'm just looking to have that list again so that we can begin to review prior to actually voting on the new tax rate and setting of the tax rate.
Great. Now we move on to the other item. Is there anything else?
Order to this by Councilor Avellaneda, order that any sidewalk replacement work in the downtown Broadway area retain bricks as part of replacement work as full as present or as accent similar to present Fifth Street and Washington Avenue in the Carey Square area between Bloomingdale and Silk Street.
Chair recognizes Councilor Avellaneda.
Thank you. This order is a result of-
What's your motion?
I'm sorry, motion to adopt under suspension.
Unanimously under suspension. Is there no objections? Council, you have the floor.
Thank you. This motion comes from the recent replacement of the sidewalks in front of the police station. That area of, the downtown area had at one point an all-brick sidewalk, and to my dismay, the whole block was redone, and in doing so, all of the brick work was taken out and none remained. I believe that while it may be okay to take, have all cement sidewalks in other parts of the area, the downtown has always been historically a brick area. And I understand that there are concerns about actually having all brick sidewalks, and I'm not pushing for that. But there has been design work both on Fifth Street, if one takes to walk down there, or in the Carey Square area, where it's not completely all concrete, but a little bit of accent points with brickwork in there. I think that downtown area is a historic part, even though it may not be designated officially, but the historic part of our downtown should remain somewhat and include some brickwork. And I'm asking that our DBW and our City Manager maintain that historic look and have a little bit of accent marks. And I point to those two particular areas, as I stated, Fifth Street and Carey Square Ave, where, as an example of it, so that we can balance both the safety of concrete that makes, allows people to walk on an even surface, but at the same time allow the accent and the beauty of brick, and that shows that it is a different part of the city. If one's to go down to the police station right now and just see the all-concrete, I think it makes a huge difference and was a disservice. So I just don't want to see that again.
Great. Okay, so we move to adopt that unanimously under suspension, and-
Okay, the next order is a request to accept the warrant for the November 3, 2020 state election introduced by Councilor Avellaneda.
What's the wish of the council?
I ask that this be adopted on a roll call vote.
So we have roll call.
Councilor Zabid?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero? Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, under, motion adopted. And final order every evening, introduced by Councilor Recupero, request for the City Manager.
In reading ahead and in consultation with the city solicitor, I've determined that this actually order is against the charter, and I'm ruling it out of order. Okay.
What is against the charter?
The request that the City Manager, jaw posting, ask that it require a person to live in the City of Chelsea. It goes against charter. It goes against the charter. It goes against the charter, the interference of City Manager's duties. Yes.
But they already have that already. The Administrative Code says that's what they have to live here. Doesn't got nothing to do with the charter. The Administrative Code says they have to.
Correct.
So how's that out of order? The Administrative Code says they have to live here.
It conflicts with the roles and duties between the City Charter, the City Council, and that of the City Manager, interference.
I don't understand. Explain, so let me understand correctly what you're saying. The Administrative Code says he has to live here, right? But you say that doesn't, the charter trumps that? The charter says we can't ask him to live here?
What the City Charter states is that we cannot interfere with the administration's on the hirings of what the City Manager does. It's a conflict.
We're not telling him who to hire. We're not saying to him you have to hire such a person. I can understand that that was the case. This is not the case. The case is just saying what the Administrative Code says to do. It's not saying, we're not interfering and saying to them, well, I want you to hire this guy. We're not telling him that. That's not what we're saying. He just says to follow the Administrative Code. That's what it says. That says, right, the pastor, he has to live in Chelsea. Okay, that's not telling him who he has to hire. We're not saying to him, you got to hire this guy. We're not telling him who he has to hire.
The Administration Code allows waivers.
But we're not telling him interfering with the daily operation.
Again, again.
Next meeting, I want you to show me where it says we interfering with the daily operation, because I don't think it's interfering with the daily operation. It would be if we say to him, you cannot hire this guy, and we telling him who to hire.
The Administrative Code allows for waivers of residency.
Okay, I want you to show me. Then everything we do interferes with the daily operation.
Yes.
Any comments about this? I highly suggest that we may continue this conversation during the Subcommittee that was requested by Councilor Vido. So if you want to bring this up, this could totally be added, and we can discuss it during the Subcommittee that was requested by the Councilor, and I'd be happy to, I'm sure, to hear about it and chime in, but we can do that. How does that sound?
I want to see where it says that it interferes with the daily operation, because it does not.
Councilor Recupero, I will allow you to bring this up during the Subcommittee on Conference on the position.
You sound like Michelle Watson. That's what she says. Everything interferes, and everything you do interferes with the daily operation.
Okay.
I want to see it anywhere. I want you to show me.
Seeing that I ruled it out of order, is there any other comments?
Can I ask a question, point of information?
Point of information, Councilor Vido.
We received a late communication that wasn't read into the record regarding a committee for the business foundation, and I know that a lot of councilors, I myself have received a bunch of phone calls from local businesses. I just want to make sure, for the sake of transparency, that that committee has been fully dissolved. Can we ask the City Manager to, through the chair, to respond to that question?
I'm sorry, is this a completely different subject matter? You're talking about a communication now. That matter's not before us.
Yeah, because it wasn't mentioned, the communication, but I know that it's late, so we're not reading it in to the record. But we received, I don't know about other councilors, but I received some phone calls from some small businesses who were concerned, and I just want to make sure that that committee is actually dissolved, and I want to hear from the City Manager.
We did not have any, that matter's not on tonight's agenda, so we can't talk about it.
Okay.
Are there any public announcements? Are there any public announcements? Councilor Brown, you can ask a question.
So, my question is, in respect of the order being ruled out of business, or out of order for the business tonight, is it possible we can get a written notification of what about this, what specifically about this order is written out, because it doesn't actually deal with day-to-day operation of, or her, city manager, how to hire someone. It just gives a platform that the wish of the council wished to be considered a Chelsea resident. So, I think that, in fairness, I think we have the right to have a voice to say the wish of the council, if this is the wish of the council, that in accordance with any position, we probably don't have obligation reunions, this is a newly created position. That's why I thought it would be important to have a conversation prior to just going out with these committees and say, okay, we're gonna pay someone twenty thousand dollars to come in and tell them which that's the Chelsea. I think we as local officials were elected to make some kind of decision to give some type of ground rule, and I think this is something that we should look at here and be able to say, hey, the wish of the council is that if this person, even if they come from Australia or Atlanta, we will give you a year or six months or whatever, we want you, we compensate you, but we want you to be a part of our community, especially when we're talking about including. So, I think this is something which you can say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, previously, in anticipation of this meeting, I looked at the order and spoke to the city solicitor. The administrative code allows waivers. The city council is prohibited from interfering with day-to-day operations. Hiring is under the purview of the city manager. Telling him what qualifications a recruit has, including a residency requirement, is an interference of the administrative code and his day-to-day duties. So, again, if the chair, if that's the explanation I have, that's why I'm ruling it out of order. Now, if someone, it's-
Well, with respect, Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, let us have it in writing, so we'll be able to live with it. That's all we have here.
Again.
I mean, if members of the council, it's unsure, but I'm sure that if you take a vote, there's members of the council right here tonight, it may be in the book, so there's no harm in just having it done. That's all I'm saying. My last comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Councilor Lopez?
Yes. Regardless of the letter that we received from the city council, it was sent in last night at ten fifty-one p.m., so it was sent in before twelve noon today, so we should read it. Sorry. I was saying that the letter we received from the business owners, actually, the email, it was sent in last night at ten fifty-one p.m., so it was, it made it before twelve noon today, so we should be able to read it.
Councilor Ennio Lopez, you're referring to another matter, which again, was stated about a late communication. Late communications are not accepted, anything that was not done by Friday. That has been the policy for years now for the city council. As a matter of fact, it was not even included in, at least my packet that I received this morning, but if it was, a late communication is not accepted, it can be entered into the next city council meeting.
Okay, question?
That has been consistent, even communications, late communications from the city manager himself have not been read or entered when dated after the said date of Friday, noon time.
Okay. I got a question for you. So, I think we can receive a letter until noon time today, Monday, right? No?
No. The, any late communication, anything after noon on Friday would be received and can be read into the account at our next city council meeting.
Okay. You want to get a letter saying or defines what daily operation is to us?
You can always send an email communication from, from-
My understanding was always, if, daily operation means that if we tell the city manager how to run it, we're not telling them, this wasn't telling them how to run it. It's already incorporated in the administrative code.
We're going back and forth, so, Counselor-
We're telling them who to hire.
We're moving on to the next business, any public announcements? Counselor Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want the public that's listening tonight, we'll be having a subcommittee on public safety this Wednesday, which is October 7th. Public safety will be taking place here at City Hall at the conference room. If you're interested in attending this public safety, obviously, it's public safety, it's around some of the shootings that we've been hearing in the city of Chelsea, we're gonna have the police, the city manager, and city council members welcome to come in. Please call City Hall if you're interested in coming, and let Fatima know that you would like to come, it's very limited, but we'll try to get everyone in as much as possible. It starts at seven thirty, and we need you to come out if you feel that there's a lot of things going on, this is the way you can hear exactly how we're trying to tackle it, what we're doing, and also the concerns that we have. We have the concerns that you have, but we want you to know that we're addressing this issue. There have been, in light of what's happening over the nation, there have been some shootings here, and we realize that there's a number of shootings that should not be going on, but again, it's too many, and it's too many going into the fall season, so we're hoping that with our police department, our city manager, we'd be able to make some resource more available, so we can find out what's causing some of these shootings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Vido?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick announcements. Number one, I just want to thank the Chelsea Youth Adult Alliance, and the Chelsea Black Community, and organizations that work with them to facilitate and have the protests that they did on Saturday with respect to the Breonna Taylor verdict. I know that when we had the first protest a couple of months ago, there was a lot more people that attended. The media, we tend to kind of follow the media, and it's starting to lose gas, but I just want to remind us that we are committed to this, that's what makes Chelsea so beautiful, is that we stay committed to a lot of these causes, and we lead the way, so I just wanted to remind folks that the Chelsea Youth Adult Alliance is doing wonderful work, and that I want to make sure that we continue to support them. Secondly, I just wanted to remind people that we are still in a pandemic, and we are seeing an uptick in our numbers, and so I just want to make sure that people remain vigilant, and washing their hands, and wearing masks in public places, because we are not out of this at all. In fact, everyone's warning of a second wave, so I just want people to be safe out there and to make sure that we remember that we're still in a pandemic, and still have to exercise proper hygiene to try to avoid the spread of the pandemic and COVID-19. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
We'll have a meeting with the auditors on Wednesday here at City Hall.
Anybody else? Is there any moment of silence?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Mike Connors, who was a longtime Chelsea resident firefighter who passed away last week.
Please rise for a moment of silence. That concludes our meeting. Thank you very much.